...the orders, please. Councilor will play.
Councilmember Canfield?
Here.
Councilmember Chambers?
Here.
Councilmember Salzberg?
Here.
Councilmember Jankovic?
Here.
And Gary Bor.
I'm here.
Uh, motion to approve the committee of the whole agenda tonight.
Uh, Mr. Morrison, we approve to approve the committee of the whole.
I'll support.
Discussion or changes, please.
Councilmember Canfield?
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers?
Yes.
Councilmember Salzberg?
Yes.
Councilmember Jankovic?
Yes.
And Gary Bor.
Yes.
Uh, citizen comment, anybody? All right, uh, showboat discussion, Michael.
Last week we, uh, yeah, last week we opened a bid on the, um, the construction for the showboat for the, uh, hull and the frame, and we received one bid, which was a lot higher than we anticipated, and met and started discussing, uh, different options, uh, for that, and, uh, Rich, Rich is actually on that terminal here, Rich in a minute, and he's gonna, he's gonna update you as to where we're at, some of the options. One of the things we met, committee met, well, actually, it's taken back, it was two weeks ago, and we felt it was time to approach the city council to see what we should do next, so, uh, Rich, I'm gonna turn it over to you.
Okay, well, for the benefit of the club, let's just talk for a brief minute about, um, the showboat, force the build to thirty by a hundred and ten.
Where are you gonna put that?
Somewhere in the water.
Oh.
Make it on Lake Alto.
Okay.
Maybe in the desert.
No, seriously, the, the committee's been around longer than I've been here, um, part of it was back four or five years or so, and there's been a big effort, of course, to repurpose the showboat, so, the committee got together, come up with this idea, and they'll do, and you'll see in the introduction, they were talking about thirty by a hundred and ten foot, the whole main structure, um, it's gonna be about eight thousand square feet in total of floor space, so it's a pretty good sized vessel, and then they have a capacity of at least two hundred and twenty, probably more, when you start crunching the numbers, it can actually fit more like two eighty on there, I think, is the number, right guys?
Something like that.
Yep, and then, like Mike said, November seventh, excuse me, November seventh, we issued the bid package, um, Chris Chamberlain here is our owner's rep, he has actually built boats, and so he's actually a good one to have on our team, so he can give us some more professional guidance. We put the bid up on November seventh, advertised it to at least four vendors, it was on the, the city's webpage for at least twenty-six days, and it was advertised in the local newspaper too. Got two responses, only one bid, one vendor basically said, "I don't work in steel, so I'm, I'm not gonna bid." We got an engineer's estimate of eight hundred to a million dollars to build this, and then the number came back at one point five million.
What's the reason for that? The tariffs or not, was that?
Well, we actually thought that was one of the issues, and then when we had a conference call with them, a week later, we realized that steel really wasn't as much of an issue as we thought it was. A big spike happened around twenty seventeen, and it has been kinda steady, probably a little bit declining, right Chris?
Yep.
So, we weren't really entirely focusing on steel anymore as the, as the real issue. In our conference call with them, though, we were trying to pick away at what the problem was, was it something in our spec, was it too restricted, was it, uh, too high of a, I don't know if you can say it, too, too thick of a gauge of steel? We were trying to get down to what really the problem was with the quote coming in so different, and if you see on the December tenth paragraph there, we start picking away at some of the issues were. Some things in our specs weren't very clear, so, making the paddle wheel move, which had been really more of a dream of mine, I'd say more than anybody on the committee, was a fifteen to twenty thousand dollar, uh, budget allocation, which is pretty good size, just for a little bit history order, to make the paddle wheel move, so, so we figured that's a savings right there, we could just take that route, this paddle look and stay stationary. They said they were need railings as a issue for them, they don't do really hard neat stuff, we'd have to have those all laser cut, so that was a ten thousand dollar allocation they put in there. Site restoration, twenty thousand dollars they allocated, trucking twenty, forty to fifty thousand dollars, and then onsite fabrication work, which was really a big number, a hundred and eighty to two hundred and twenty thousand dollars, so, these are some of the things that were driving up the cost.
Is making that paddle wheel move in the future, if it's U P W fabrication or something, is that realistic?
It's got to be designed properly to begin with, so that it's not sticking in the water and moving to propel the boat, it really just needs to be in the water just a little bit to make the waters flash, to feel like it's moving. You know, I thought it'd be a cute thing to do, but...
It's doable for a lot less than what they're...
Fifteen to twenty thousand dollars is a, is a big hook and money for carpentry just for...
There's a lot of fabrication talent.
Quite sure. A lot of weight and wood too, isn't it?
What's that?
Whether you can make it out of steel too, the paddle wheel.
I think that was actually aluminum, because of the, or back.
So then we did talk about some other opportunities for saving money, and the aggressive schedule that we outlined in the RFP was a potential savings, so if we held off on the schedule a little bit, we could possibly save up to fifty thousand dollars. So, we're starting to get the sense, though, that the, the project needed to be pushed further out, further out in order to accommodate their schedule to get the costs lower, but still fifty thousand dollars out of one point five million dollars is not a huge savings. And then we did touch on the cost of steel, again, steel prices jumped forty percent in twenty seventeen, and they've been a little steady, really not a factor that we thought it was. The one thing that the engineer's estimate did not include was modularization of the vessel, and that was to chunk it up into sections and put on a truck and bring it to labor. Moran Iron Works is out of Onaway, Michigan, and I believe around a canal or a river that goes off to the lake, and so they can basically build and launch right there without having to truck anything. Obviously, for a little situated, you cannot get that moved here unless you're trucking.
So that's a significant...
The, the moving expenses, we went through it, and that's reasonable, there's not, I say reasonable, it sounds expensive, but for the amount of trips you have to bring to bring oversized loads here, and I move a boat that's the same size per trip, like, I have a lot of experience in this neighborhood, that's right in line. I, I didn't, nothing added up that was like, oh, why is that trip, it was exactly what I would charge to move my boat here, like, by the time you added up all the pieces to get here, so the, the transportation cost is...
Hasn't changed.
Reasonably in line. Reasonable, right?
And that's in our one point five million dollar.
Yep.
Okay, and then, uh, if you wanna put it to the second page, we start talking about, um, labor, and we heard this originally, that it was about ten thousand dollars to build this thing, and Moran Iron Works actually came in around that ten thousand dollar mark as well, so, labor being seventy-seven dollars to ninety-nine dollars an hour of overtime, we're looking at seven eighty, seventy thousand dollars of that quote just in labor. There's the big chunk of money right there.
Well, does the aggressive schedule account for more of that?
Yes, it does, exactly.
Was that the eighty thousand dollar savings off of the seven seventy then?
Most likely, yeah.
Or stretching up enough?
Yep.
Actually, that's pretty close to some of it in our, in our industry too, it's about half and a half, half labor, half area labor, is what it is, and costing materials.
Anything anybody wants to add before we start talking about options, and this is the committee, by the way, we should introduce ourselves, I'm sorry. Have you ever met everybody, Shannon?
Shannon, Arna Fiallo.
Arna Fiallo.
Your design?
John McGregor. Let's get here.
Mark Munt.
This is Shannon.
Okay, so there's everybody, and you've seen everybody who's more of a push benefit. They got a new shirt too. But they can add any of this conversation too, just so, just so you know.
Can I ask a question?
Absolutely.
Site work, fabrication, and equipment, one eighty to two twenty, that's not labor, what is that?
Probably the crane and...
Is that ironing in?
Yeah.
Yes.
I mean, if this thing's coming in in one piece, because that's how they build it, how do we get so much fabrication on site?
Well, they're gonna have to assemble it, four pieces, stack it, because it's gonna come in several truckloads, uh, they have to put their guys up while they're here, rent equipment to put it back in the water, uh, anything else you guys can think of?
Well, a lot of these, I don't know, don't have my nose with me, but, a lot of these prices are allowances.
Which that is very scary.
Which leads you, they're covering their butt, you know, we've all at the table, men in business long enough, their allowances, and he, he did say that when I approached, I can't remember the gentleman's name, who ran the, the conference call, but anyway, when I bring, brought that up to his attention, he said, "They're just allowances."
So it could be double.
Hopefully, they're gonna come down, because they seem like large allowances.
Right, but I don't know how you could enter into a contract without not exceeding number, right?
Well, yeah, we, yeah, that's between the city and the area, whoever you guys pick, it's between the city council, whoever you guys pick, if you wanna solidify some of this, but, like, what it said, in general, just wanna talk, see if there was something with a glaring price.
I don't know how we consider a million and a half dollar project with one bid, um, like, maybe the aluminum company, we say, "Give us a price for aluminum," maybe it's not that much more, but I just, I don't know.
Well, I tend to agree, and we had another meeting, um, right, right after this, and it, um, kinda changes the conversation a bit, too, and I think is more relevant than the one bid that came in, because it, I think it changes the timeframe, and I don't wanna, like, jump ahead, because this is not my expert, expertise with the fundraising and stuff, but, if, we were kinda pushing ahead and under one assumption, and now I think we have to have a change of priority, I think we were talking about getting the frame of the boat here, and now that our fundraising expert has told us that's not the way to go, so I don't wanna...
Nope, that's a perfect segue.
I'll let him talk about that, 'cause this is really, fundraising is not my expertise, so...
So, based on what we heard from Moran Iron Works, that started the conversation about, well, what do we do next, what are some of our options, we always wanna exercise the options. So we started throwing these up on the wall, basically saying, um, look at six different things, build the structure as is, that would require some fundraising, um, we're looking at about a two point seven million dollar fundraising goal, and if we build as is, because, of course, one point five of that is the structure itself. The team didn't even have a professional fundraiser, we'll talk a little bit about that at the end, um, and then we would also need to discuss whether, whether grants are available to us, um, but the team in general didn't feel like the two point seven goal was out of reach, so that was one option. Second option is to rebid the project, like you pointed out, Mr. Canfield, that you may be cast a broader net nationwide to get bigger, um, excuse me, get other people to bid on the vessel, um, maybe advertise a little bit longer, that's another option. There's a downfall to that, though, is that, uh, we may actually offend the one bid that we have, and we may not be interested in bidding it any longer if we do that, um, but we could also incur additional costs if we do that too, so suppose we pick up a vendor out of Louisiana, we're gonna incur additional costs to truck it here, and so there's some trade-offs to this, this rebid the project option.
Is there, is there anybody else in Michigan that...
There's not, I mean, you kinda have this thing of, well, they'll build a part, or they'll build a part, but you don't have so many people that build a whole project and bring it to site, you know, there isn't a general boat contractor that does inland stuff, most of the, if you were to do a general contractor boat, it'd be built in a shipyard, and the boat would go into the lake, you know, it wouldn't be brought inland, that's just, I, I've been doing this my whole life, I've never met anybody else that does it like what I'm talking about, and, um, the only reason I think these guys, I mean, they're considering it, because they build boats, but it's, they're kind of a hybrid between a shipyard and custom steel fabrication, because they build parts for power plants, so they're familiar with the trucking and delivery inland aspect of it, most of the people that would consider building a, a ship of this size don't have anything to do with delivery inland, they, they ship it, and it goes out in the ocean, that's it, they never, never go the other way, so, this is kind of a unique person that we found, and, um, the houseboat thing, or the aluminum boat, there's, the people that do it inland and truck houseboats and things like that around, that do it out of aluminum, um, you'd have to have additional engineering to build a boat out of aluminum, because the, the material does not translate, you can't just say, "Here's a plant for a steel boat, build it out of aluminum," and if, uh, the aluminum, the material cost for aluminum is four times the price of what it is for steel right now, so that's part of, that's why we didn't even start going down that road, because, and I think we ballparked at one point, the steel cost in this project was six or seven hundred thousand.
Seven hundred eighty.
Well, that, that totally prices it completely out, it's built out of aluminum, so, we didn't even pursue that.
Makes sense, no?
It just scares me a little bit, but there may not be anybody else that plays this game if we have a choice tonight.
Who built your boat?
I did. I, I built, well...
How long did it take you?
We had one boat... I don't have a man-hour thing, because the last, the boat is most similar to this, we built ninety-one, and then we actually decided we wanted it bigger, so we unbolted it and put another thing in the middle, and ninety-eight made it bigger, but it's, the original one that we built ninety-one is almost identical to what you're trying to do here, and, um, we kinda just did it out of cash flow, and I wanna say it was a year and a half that we had into it with a dozen guys, but, when I ran the numbers backwards in my head of everything, it worked out to about the ten thousand man-hours, it seemed to make sense with the time we had into it, so...
So you had all the fabrication stuff to do that at that time?
Yeah, I still do, I have, part of why I didn't even, why I ended up coming on as an owner's rep and I didn't bid on this ourselves, is that we have another boat under construction for ourselves, and I just don't have the space right now, I don't, I'm not a huge company, you know, but we have a, some warehouse space that we build boats in, so, I didn't wanna, like, put something, put an offer in that I don't have the time or the space to do it right now, and if this was further in the future, um, it might be something I'm interested in, in doing, and I don't wanna convince anything, but I sure wanna see a boat over here that's more than anything else.
Can we buy one of your existing boats?
Well, that goes to one of the next questions, uh, the littlest or options.
Yeah, um, we should put Chris down as an option number seven here, if he's interested, but, um, another option we talked about was basically putting the project on hold, we've, we've seen that with timing of some construction projects, it matters, and so if you hold off on something, perhaps you can get a better cost, we thought steel was an issue, we thought maybe if we pulled the project steel, it would come down, that might be a savings factor too.
Sorry, do we run into an issue there because of the expression of Dave's mind?
Yes.
That's, that could be an issue?
Plus, if you weigh labor costs, will definitely be a big issue.
Obviously, it was just an option, probably not the best option, um, reengineering the project might be an option as well, so for, we've already got a quote from Seaplan, who did the original design, for an initial thirty-eight thousand dollars, they will redesign the vessel to value engineer, basically it takes some of the steel off, and, um, if you can spend thirty-eight thousand and maybe save three hundred, you know, that might be worth one option, but we don't know exactly what it would save.
Changes a number of factors on it, too, you get a value engineer, you get a value boat, you, you're substitute, this boat, I, no reason why, when you build this, it shouldn't last fifty years with regular maintenance, you value engineer it, you'll have better than what you, you've had out here, but it's some, it's gonna take a lot more upkeep than the, the current build, or current design that we have, so, that is a factor.
And what do you put in there for yearly maintenance or five-year maintenance program? What do you think that would mean?
We haven't really developed a great budget for that yet, we knew, we know initially that the maintenance would be very low cost, it was right here, and the maintenance would of course take a long time, um, we figured utility costs would stay pretty steady in the rules part two, but we have, we're gonna...
You mentioned this boat should last fifty years.
Or more.
Or more.
Those that we built for fifty-three thousand and seventy-five lasted forty.
Okay, I'm just putting that number out there, but if you ignore, if you put it in the water and forgot about it, it's gonna be there for fifty years from now, if you do a little bit of maintenance to the, the hull and outside structures, regular paint and things, there's a freighter on the Great Lakes that's a hundred and eight years old and it's still running, so, you, there's no reason why you can't just, I say it, essentially.
No one could see it, all right?
There's no happening on the others.
I keep looking for a crystal ball.
Yeah, where you find one, you, you let us know.
I'm gonna charge to look at it.
Okay, okay.
Another engineering option is to just have a steel-hulled wood structure on top, we've really not explored that at the time yet, but it is still an option, might be...
What's that, sorry?
You said we could... A little option, because working...
There's concerns.
On the boat, the main goal, the numbers are coming in higher, but the main goal was to make this new vessel, repurposing it, as, we are gonna put money away, and that will give, the figure will be given to us by the fundraiser, you know, I think he used, correct if I'm wrong, I think he used close to eight hundred thousand dollars, but the first five years, Chris was estimating twenty thousand dollars put away each year, that he would not use, go towards that, on, on what this is expected generally, if that makes sense to you, you know, and, but our, our main goal was to build a boat that we would not have to, but, to give you a little bit of history, I know on the showboat, it's always been his problem, maintaining this boat, fixing this boat, painting this boat, and things like that, finding the money, generating the money to do that, but it's always been a problem.
Our goal in the wood construction is the root of that, right?
Yes, oh, it is, the folks, it's in the water, you go, we were out, Liz and myself and somebody else was taking things off the boat, a week ago, Liz, and some of the, I've always, I've been, since I've been with the Blough family, he's the, the person that built his last boat, we maintain this boat.
Only lasts so long.
You're at times, like, right now, we would be throwing, it is condemned, we do need, between the city and you guys, you guys need to get it out of the water, because it is, you know, you, you drive it through from the west.
So I have...
There's tariffs coming.
I have a couple different boats, I have a all-wood boat, that's a personal motor boat, and I can tell you that I have an old curse craft, and the maintenance just never ends, and you're, it just, that's not what you want, you can't, you, nobody even builds wooden boats anymore, but, and then I have the boat in Lansing is so much similar in the way that it's steel and wood mixture, and it's coming up on thirty years old, and, I have been pouring the money into it the last two years to replace a lot of the wood that's just worn out from exposure, and, uh, you know, it's not like the moisture, you're on the water, you don't get any more moisture than that, and trying to get longevity out of it, and to do it, I say, modern building methods, you have the old school shit building with two-inch-thick planks anymore, that, this doesn't exist, and, uh, you, you, even if you, so if you built a, a steel bottom and a wooden upper structure on it, you're gonna be right back where you are thirty years from now, no matter what kind of maintenance you do on it, and, so, the, everything, really, the other part of it too, and this is something, there's one wooden steamboat that runs the Mississippi River, it's Delta Queen, it's been sitting for ten years because they couldn't get permission to operate it from the coast guard, no boat built after sixty-six for commercial purposes is built out of wood, they have to be built out of almost entirely flame-retarded material, none, and that's why they're just, there aren't any wooden boats, part of why there aren't any wooden boats anymore.
That's also a lot of the climate that we have here.
Yeah.
Well, yes.
And it's being used, we're gonna sit here four months a year.
Anyway, sorry.
No, no, this is good discussion, it's, they're the expert, your input is very important.
So they, they couldn't, they always got exemption past the sixty-six mark, every four years or eight years, the Congress, a congressional exemption to continue to operate their boat, that expired in two thousand and ten, and sapped for the last eight years, this last Congress just passed another exemption to let the Delta Queen run again on the Mississippi River, it's been sitting as a museum for eight years, the, next season starts up their operations again, but that's the oldest, still not ready to see a boat.
Pour all that money in there, make it river-worthy again.
And they're gonna, I don't know what, what they've been sitting on, but, I mean, it's a national historic landmark, so maybe they get some considerations that way, but, it's a lot, I can't even...
That'd be too much for a...
The steel in the hull is gonna be thicker than the side of us, just so you know that, do, the steel and, the steel decks, this, this roof that we have on there, we have to do something.
Yeah.
We did wood, they're gonna tamper, may not be using the right technology, but they're gonna tape it, so the water, the third deck, if I, my very judgment right, is gonna be tapered towards the west, so most of the water will go to the water, so all the steel... But the other decks, the other decks will be, and, and all the decks that would be painted, the steel's painted, Sherman Williams paint, that was a question we had for the, Moran, and he couldn't answer it as far as guarantees, and how long is this paint, how long is it gonna last if it's done professionally? I did ask that question, he, the gentleman, did he go on?
Somebody responded.
Seven years, thank you.
The steel points of this actually looks like it's, they put that pattern of wood into it, so it kinda looks at it's just a smooth steel, or does it actually make it look like a wood?
That's a good question, we...
That exact question came up, and the short version is, is, um, you could put stuff over the outside, but now you're just digging yourself a whole maintenance problem again, the best way to get the, get it here, you're gonna have a smooth surface, if you don't like it, you can, later on, we can, we could go back, um, I said the best thing to do is to get, get a lot of, a big art community over here, get someone to paint the texture on the side of the boat for you, then you're not compromising the longevity of the maintenance out of it, you still, you're just painting over what's there, and, um, you know, if, if you put, say, a wood board over the outside of it, you're, you're gonna cause moisture to get trapped, it's just gonna make more of a maintenance problem, the, nobody that I know of makes stamped steel to give you the texture that you're looking for, um, or I would be using it.
He's right, though, this is the perfect place to be able to have somebody do that, you know, all arts alone, but Tom Conover happens, is a huge, huge part of it.
I mean, he had one sand plus.
Four layers of paint on something, you lose the wood very quickly.
Yeah.
We just want something that lasts.
Yeah, they, oh, there's, there's different ways.
I don't think I would fire, but, my one boat has a big blank spot on the side of it, and I painted a fat, our, our company logo has like a paddle wheel in the logo, and that fits perfectly in that spot, and, you know, it just works out well, or you could do it. Yeah, so...
So are you using like epoxy paints on it then?
Yep, that's the thing that they quoted us is with, um, it's a two-part, uh, Seaguard, and that's what we use on all of our boats, it's industry standard.
These have gas stations.
Yeah.
Number five, buy a used boat, is there such a creator out of this?
There actually are, we did a brief search online, you can't find used boats, had we gone and looked at one?
I have.
Chris has? You cross off that C attached, by the way.
I'll run with this one, um, there's one guy that really specializes in the riverboat theme, um, in Oklahoma Marine, uh, I would have looked at, actually, they're affordable is a relative question, because you're not getting exactly what you want, but you won't, you might end up with a bigger boat, but now how do you get the boat here, and, so I went and looked at, um, and we actually used this broker to get our boat for Detroit, which is substantially larger than anything you would need, it's like forty or fifty thousand square foot boat, six decks, and there's, there's one, a couple of them that are like available on the market, and they're a lot less money, I, I went and looked at one in Iowa on the Mississippi River, it's six hundred thousand dollars, but, I had a quote, quoted to get it to Detroit for me, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars to get it from Iowa to Detroit, basically, you're looking at a million dollars, plus you gotta refurbish it, the problem is, is you're not in Detroit, and even if you drove it around the Great Lakes and got it over here, who are you going to pay to cut this boat up, bring it here, and put it back together for you, that, there is, is the problem, and, if I could do this, if I thought it was like feasible, I'd already be running on the river over there right now. I, I want it, as bad as anybody, I've, I've looked at this, and in some respects, yeah, you got a great thing, because it's already engineered, and it's, you might end up with a much bigger boat than what you have, but at the same point in time, you have a huge, huge problem getting it here, and, and that, I don't have an answer to.
That seems to be the, the bottom, bottom line, it's, no matter what way we go, it's expensive period to get it here.
Yeah.
Could we rail that in?
No, I mean, I moved a house a mile, the cost of moving wires and stuff, something like this going down the road, trying to get underneath overpasses, it's impossible.
Trant parts on a rail car have rail, it's probably even more narrow than a boat.
Yeah, it's, it had to be in such small pieces, I don't think that's...
So I've moved, we have a seventy-five foot long boat, it's fifteen feet wide, and I've trucked that around a lot to different festivals, we stick four different towns every summer for Fourth of July, Labor Day festivals, um, just other festivals that they had, we take it over from Lansing up to Midland and over to Lake Orion, which is north of Detroit, and, um, a few other lakes in Detroit suburbs, that's a pain just to move an oversized load down the road, and to, you can do it somewhat affordably, but then, the, um, we, we bought this other hull out of Kentucky, which is the same, how, there's a bunch of houseboat companies down there in Lake Cumberland, and there's a biggest model they build essentially is twenty feet wide and a hundred feet long, and we bought, during the recession, and one of them went out of business, and they had one that was partial, it wasn't done, so we bought it for scrap value, and that's the one I'm working to outfit and put into service over here, and that was, like, we moved the boats around, not that big a deal, it's only five feet wider, right, well, you gotta have police Well, you got to have police, four police cars escort going through. I mean, it just racks up so exponentially when you get to a certain size. And, I mean, I, I don't know how you rail it here, but, I mean, maybe you could get a boat those fifteen feet wide here, but you'd be stepping down significantly in size. I, I don't know. I've, I've been thinking this through and I haven't figured a good answer to it myself, so...
I will say, I appreciate how invested you are in this project.
Great to have you here, you're the expert.
Thank you.
We'll just use your playful pontoons when we're into on the flat, on the grand. We'll roll it up and over.
Well, I thought about that for the big boat in Grand Rapids, how to get it over the dam, but there's too many low bridges. Give me a point. I, I have thought outside the box.
All right, last option then. Obviously not a popular option, but you always have to exercise it as an option if you evaluate for its worthiness, which is do nothing. Obviously, the community is very, very tied to the boat, the logo. The paddle with the logo is right through the city seal. But we do, we have to look at that, do nothing, give money back and just let our heads clean.
Well, to go back to when me and Liz put this together, we were as a committee before we got involved with the city and everyone else, our goal was to raise a million dollars. So what I'm saying is, if we do, still be our goal, which I am a very goal-oriented guy, I'm going to meet that goal. If we're going to raise, the gentleman we talked to, the committee will raise a million dollars with the money the city has. We're not, you know, if you look at the whole picture, out of the box, this, that, we're not that far off. Yes, number of the company are bigger. What are you going to, what are you going to do? Is it drive out it? Or get, get a few more real bids, which we could. I agree with that. One bid is wrong. You can't base, you know, that everybody I've talked to and anybody that has any sense, you can't base it off of one bid.
This is exactly why you can't do nothing, because then you lose that passion and that passion, Liz's passion and their passion. I would not, I don't want to be part of it.
It is an option though. It's, it's not my option, but it is an option for somebody that is scared to take the next step. Like Mark Muntz said, let's just dive in and see what we can do.
No, we have to move forward. There, there's no other option.
Yeah.
I don't have a problem putting it up for rebid and narrowing up what we're bidding.
I have a problem.
Inputs that, not to exceed numbers.
Because the problem that I have is the city wants to use this as a venue. Okay, everything we have into this, Carol, you can step up, anything, you know, she, she drew it. I think it's the right size.
No, I don't mean the boat. I mean narrow up what you're asking them to build.
Okay.
Define it a little bit.
A lot of the questions were there.
I already know that what you guys asked for was, they had to just throw numbers as I would or Greg would. If you don't give the proper answers, you would do the same thing.
Yeah, yeah.
So I think if you redo this...
We do have to stay focused and maybe reach out to get close to three bids.
Are there three places that do this? So if you go, I think the relevant defining thing here is, we set it down with the fundraiser. And I think money drives every decision that we make. And the short version is, we have, better than half, sixty, seventy percent of what we think we need to build the whole thing. And I was pushing very hard for, well, let's get the new boat, even though it won't have an interior on it, but it'll be a showpiece, you know, at least we'll have that here. And the fundraiser, and that's his area of expertise, came in and said, that's a terrible idea. Says you don't do a single thing until you have all the money in the bank. And...
People are less likely to give money.
You know, and I've never fundraised money for...
You already got it.
This thing's in jeopardy of not happening, I'll take a little deeper.
Right. So that kind of, if that's the case, and from the timeframe he laid out, and you're talking another eight months to a year, twelve months, maybe more. Well, that's plenty of time to rebid it out and to refine our, our needs some more. And if we're going to have the whole thing, we can build the whole thing rather than only having to have part of it. And... How long is the stage one million good for?
So that's a good question. I, last one to say, I was in the Capitol. Just trying to help with some low dock issues. Had the opportunity to run into both Senator Hillibrand and soon to be Senator Brink. And I conveyed both of them some of the issues we were having with the boat. And wanted to make sure that the million dollars we had didn't get taken away at the end of next fiscal year. Senator Hillibrand stated that he believed this project, because they extended it, was a, was in a three-year work plan, but he had to confirm that for me. So what he was basically saying is it was, it was there for three years. In addition, he is an, he's the head of the Senate Appropriations Committee. He's coming off the Senate next week. As lame duck ends this week, pretty much in a year, he's out. But one of the things that he had stated to me was that they're going to try, they can try and seek conditional funding in a preliminary appropriations bill for next fiscal year. May or may not happen, don't know, but he said he would at least make that effort. Senator Brink, on the other hand, when I talked to her, I explained to her what the problem was. She wants to meet with us to discuss this. So I, I think she recognizes that she's not going to try and seek the funds whole in a year. But we have to get, you know, we would have to get a definitive answer as to when those funds would go away. But we're trying, we're trying, I'm working that process right now to try and get that resolved.
Now, she's not going to have the call at the date, so we're, we're kind of...
Well, not necessarily true, because she's a Democrat, we have a Democrat governor. That may not be true.
So we're going to try to get additional one point three million? What, how much are you looking for?
We're going to probably try to raise somewhere around one point five, one point seven.
Because didn't you say...
Do the million we have had a set aside today?
Well, we don't have all of that really left.
Because we spent some, yes.
Spent some. I don't have those numbers on my...
That's all right.
We got probably a hundred thousand.
So one five, one seven would get us over the top and finish it.
And while it'll finish the boat off.
Right.
And in conjunction with the boat, if you remember, when we put this thing together, we do have to remodel the buildings down, the rolling station and the DPW building. We have to provide, there's not going to be any restrooms on this boat, no water, no kitchen facilities.
So where do you think that, that portion is?
Well, we have that, we have.
Quarter million dollars?
We do. If we can keep going here, we can get through all that too. All right, so obviously the committee is very, very passionate about moving forward. We think it's going to be about two point seven million dollar project, and we have some of that documented here. Liz brought in a fundraiser, Mr. Keith Hopkins?
Yes.
From...
Hopkins Fundraising.
Hopkins Fundraising. He talked to us about what his services would look like. And basically, he's proposing is a year-long campaign. First three months roughly, we, we spent some time developing a committee, developing a work plan. And then his approach would be to basically get that plan together and then let it set for a short time. And then spend another three, four months going after the big donors. So, anything I had, because I know I'm not pacing it together very well, because I didn't take great notes of this part.
In his world, he would start with the big donors and he worked with Laura, this Keith Hopkins. So he's, he is familiar with low, he's worked in NIDA on that project that's going on there. So he's, he's got quite a resume, you know, we were going away, he charged us seven, two thousand dollars for twelve months, or half of that for six months. We opted, you guys opted to hire him. I was impressed, you know, he, he does the fundraising, you have to hire a marketing person, which would be anywhere from, Liz has gotten one bid already for a marketing person, and they would put a brochure together to go along with the people that, you know, asked the big donors. And he suggested, you guys can step up anytime, he suggested some of the local, to start a fund. Matching bid, if I remember right, he said they offered Loke Fund or Everhard Fund for seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
A low area community fund, his suggestion is that wait for those, they got seven hundred and fifty thousand.
Oh, in what? That's what I thought.
Seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, ask them to step up to the plate. They have it, he knows it, they do have it. Feels like this is a really worthy project. And he would be, after the NIDA case study, he would be the guy that would go with us to make that ask.
And he, he also has dealt with the fundraising from Meyer. I can't remember the lady's name. Right, didn't he say that he's, he's done with her and he would say that we should go to her? He got, he has a personal relation, I don't know how personal.
Well, he said that the Meyer Foundation is one that we definitely probably could ask for money from, because it's local. But as far as Frye and some of those other steel cases, the likelihood of us giving funds from them is probably not so good. Just because they're not, the ties aren't there.
When can you, when, when do you ask, when can you ask the community fund for...
Well, I would assume, you know, say you hired him tomorrow, we would, I mean, we'd be doing that rather quickly.
Well, don't they accept, what is it, twice a year or?
Three times.
Three times?
Friday. Friday is the deadline.
Oh, well, let's...
No, no, no. No, I mean, that's a conversation that you have without deadlines. I mean, he would go, we would go to the community fund, we'd have a...
Next time.
Yeah, really big conversation about it.
It's better to be ready than to rush it.
Lou mentioned you had a marketing number from one bid already on top of the seventy-two. Would you share that or twenty thousand, forty thousand?
Oh, how much was? Was it eighteen?
All in with seventy-two from him, eighteen from the marketing. I plugged in ten grand for three to four thousand. Looked at a hundred thousand dollars to chase down another one.
Any of that marketing and stuff, is any of that something that the DDA would help with? Does it benefit from the showboat?
Let's talk about that. It's part of the, it's part of what Mr. Hopkins said is, he said is, the city has to put skin in. So when we talked a little bit about this, we thought the DDA, the Loke and the Cable Fund are really city funds essentially. And if they could put that skin in the game, and his number was a hundred thousand. So combined, I think combined, combined a hundred thousand from the city of Lowell, to say that we are serious about this, it is going to be a revenue generator for you. We believe it, we're passionate about it. So he was really, I mean, he was really serious about that part.
Yeah, he was a firm believer too that it's, the city's, you know, since nineteen thirty-two, the boat's part of the city. Which is already gravitated on what, it has, he, he was pretty confident. Of course, he's a fundraiser, he's going to speak positively, but he was pretty confident that, you know, the city could raise this money.
I've seen in the past where these fundraisers charge money and their fees are barely covered by the money they raise. Is there any type of guarantee with them?
No. No, we, we asked that question, what's the guarantee? There's no guarantee.
All you can do is let it just track over.
He's very enthusiastic.
I will, I will tell you who to speak to. It's up to you to hire the right marketing person, to market it right, to do your homework, to present it right, and keep it very close. Anything you say, yes or no?
If you guys are thinking about the LCTV fund this year, there's some money available, but you have until February eighth at five o'clock. Put in your request.
How much, how much potential is there?
Depends on what the committee does and how much, right, this year we have a hundred and one thousand dollars. Hundred one thousand, five hundred and seventy-six dollars and thirteen cents.
Actually, we have a hundred and five.
Hundred and five, but I already, but if we don't pay the city four thousand, that would...
The crook.
We have to give the city four thousand.
We're going to cut grants to everybody, we should cut them to everybody.
I agree with you, Mark, one hundred percent. So a little over a hundred five thousand is what's...
That's where you choose to jump in this meeting, huh?
Something they also mentioned when we, when we listened to, I wasn't in the V the full time, but with the fundraiser was NIMI rights, for example, in Meyer. Meyer would want NIMI rights. So the, the showboat sponsored by Meyer or something like that.
I've been trying to figure that out for years. When we figure that out, the SS Fred.
There's all kinds of opportunity for that. There's donor signs and we find these signs. And those buy a brick, they did that buy a brick thing and they paid for half of them.
If I was hurting, I'd pay Nina, because it's Nina.
You have, and this is the perfect community for it. You have tons of those.
Meyer Baller with the King yelling.
In the middle, the slice house.
His question was, is there a big player in town?
Red bar, to bear a design.
Nobody asks me for any money ever. This will be the first time.
Nobody ever asked?
Himselfs, we don't memorial men's.
Security, I'll do the security.
Miscuit security recommend that you go to Lowell. I don't...
How about we, you can have a little section or so.
Meyer is being solicited to help with the trail pretty heavily.
Right.
There's a lot of fundraising going on locally. I mean, it, it needs to happen, it's a good project, but there's going to be competition for dollars from all of these ones.
We know that too. I mean, we know that Meyer is out there, we know that Cat Town Youth Fair is out there, we know that France is out there, and maybe the Chamber is out there.
Who knows?
We don't know.
Stranger things have happened.
Stranger things have happened. So there's, there's a lot of people right now fundraising.
And I think there's a lot of passion behind the trail project, but this is the showboat. Like this is everybody's boat. You know, it's just a small subset of people that are going to be on that trail regularly. This is the showboat.
It's a community.
Yeah, it's what we, it, I don't...
When we looked at the Hopkins, Hopkins guys fundraising breakdown.
Yeah.
It was, I wish we could, no, thinking.
You had it?
It looks like this. And what it is, at the top, you've got two people giving a hundred thousand dollars. And at the bottom, you've got fifty people that need to step up for fifteen hundred. And I don't think you see that with the trails. I didn't, I didn't give fifteen hundred dollars to the trail.
You gave twenty-five hundred, I saw the check.
I think not.
Retirement.
Yes, it is. There's going to be a lot of smaller ones too.
Correct. Very community.
Many, yeah, a lot of them.
At less than fifteen hundred, that's about, those, a hundred eighty thousand needs to be raised from many.
Yes.
But that's not what we have. The seven hundred and fifty thousand that the city would need to pull you up would be a combination of things, I would think.
The city does a hundred and a half, a hundred and fifty.
Your word out of heart attack.
Sorry, I chose my words.
The two and a half million.
I'm glad you know it.
I know what you're going to ask.
Anyway, it would be a combination of a lot of things. It would be the Cable TV Fund and the Low Area Community Fund and, and maybe the DDA and all of that collectively coming up. And it's not a one-time thing. He lays this out as over three years. So if you want to give five thousand dollars, it doesn't have to be one five thousand dollar jet. His three jets that add up to five thousand dollars. Because that's probably the way it's going to come in, this is a smaller community. And he definitely said that we could go to Frye or those other places in Grand Rapids. But they're really, the first thing I'm going to say is how much, how much does, how much skin does the city have in the game? And I keep saying the city, our community funds, how much are they investing in this? How worthwhile do they see it being? Because if we don't see it being worthwhile locally, they're sure as heck not going to get money out of your boat.
I think the fundraising, I don't really think we'll have much of an issue for that here. I mean, Perry came to us about putting fence up in the cemetery and all he asked for was a hundred dollars. And he's just, while he is there now. And it took a very short time to get that small.